Please rise for the pledge. We have Boy Scouts here today from Troop 62 sponsored by Holy Name Society of St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church, and they are attending the council meeting, working on their citizenship and community merit badge. Would you like to come up and lead us in the pledge?
I move to lead this petition. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a form.
I move to suspend the rules, a motion to suspend the rules, please, in order for the purpose of electing the county council chair and vice chair for 2018. Oh, I'm sorry. I move to approve the journal of the meeting of December 19, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Journal is approved.
How can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of electing the county council chair and vice chair for 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended.
I nominate Sam Page as chair of the county council for 2018.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to close nominations for chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing no other nomination, all those in favor of election of Sam Page to the position of council chair for 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Page is 2018 council chair.
Are there any nominations for vice chair?
That's me.
I know.
Any council member, any nominations for vice chair? Thank you, Michelle.
I nominate Hazel Erby as vice chair of the county council for 2018. Sarah S. Williams.
Councilwoman Erby's been nominated for vice chair as her second. I'll second it. All those favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Erby has been nominated for vice chair.
I move for... Be closed. I move that the nominations for council chair be closed, vice chair for 2018 be closed.
Is there a second? Move, there's a motion to close nominations for vice chair for 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nominations for vice chair are closed. Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor of electing Councilwoman Hazel Erby to the position of vice chair for 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Councilmember Erby is 2018 vice chair. Bit openings.
We have no bit openings this evening, Mr. Chair. We also have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, all districts.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number two, second district.
Same motion, so ordered.
Item number three, seventh district.
Received and filed, so ordered.
Item number four, all districts.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number five, all districts.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Received and filed, and county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion. Item number seven, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, third district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number nine, all districts.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 10.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, first district.
Received file contract in an amount not to exceed $1,193,595.65 be approved and awarded to LF Construction Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, first district.
Received file contract in an amount not to exceed $914,851.83 be approved and awarded to Gersonson Construction Company, Inc., the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14, seventh district.
Received file contract in the amount not to exceed $1,407,825.55 to be approved and awarded to Pace Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, fifth district.
Received and filed, so ordered.
Item number 16, fourth district.
Received file, the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 18, please.
So ordered.
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair?
No add-ons, county executive report.
Nothing further this evening.
Reported special committee.
I move the report be received. Please hold on the order.
Please, so ordered. Public forum.
We have four speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium when your name is called. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, first speaker.
I have to apologize, Mr. Chair, I forgot the timer this evening, so we'll just have to gauge it. First speaker this evening is Lynn Labob.
Dear council members, my name is Lynn Labob, and I am a resident of unincorporated St. Louis County District 6. As you probably remember, I have spent a great deal of time addressing the council regarding concerns related to the bulk storage of calcium chloride along with other chemicals at the business site of Snow Pro. It took months for Mr. McManus to admit this was a proposed use. In fact, he stated that it was an oversight, and he regretted the omission. Along with his final application, he had submitted salt storage bins that were approved by your planning and zoning, and ultimately your county council. Obviously, it was disturbing that Mr. McManus appeared to be sidestepping for months as to the proper storage of these chemicals that posed hazardous harm to the sewer system and the ecosystem. As you will remember, Matisse Creek is in direct proximity to Mr. McManus's business location, and the runoff of these chemicals posed a great danger to our community. Those concerns seem to be remedied by his approved petition. This past week, however, as I was driving down Lee May Ferry, I couldn't believe my eyes when I saw a strange mound of what appeared to be salt, or calcium chloride, being stored on the property without any storage bin or protection. I was shocked. I have contacted Gail Cho with the Department of Planning, County Councilman Ernie Trachis, and Jason Petteron with Metropolitan Sewer District to find out if St. Louis County changed the requirements as they relate to storing of these hazardous materials. If so, I do not remember being notified of a change or new hearing taking place. I truly implore for you to look into this matter. For some, it may seem inconsequential, but when you look back at incidents such as Times Beach and North County's Cold Water Creek, I'm sure those communities wish they would have had been proactive in making sure contractors and others were following the laws of our state and local government before irreversible damage to the environment was done. In summation, I would ask for you to follow the steps necessary to confirm whether Mr. McManus's business is in compliance with the approved petition to store those dangerous chemicals at that location, and if not, please, I ask that you hold him accountable to protect our community. I also thank you, and Happy New Year, and God bless.
Thanks, Lynn.
Next speaker this evening is Lisa Smith.
Hello, my name is Lisa Smith, I live in unincorporated St. Louis County. I'm here tonight to ask the council to have streetlights placed in unincorporated St. Louis County on Chambers Road. It has been many pedestrian accidents on Chambers Road due to how dark it is, we don't have street lighting. The community wants to know what are the steps to having streetlights placed in unincorporated St. Louis County on Chambers Road. That's it.
Thank you.
Someone will call you, if you would talk to my assistant down there.
Okay. Next speaker is Ann Cashel.
Hi, I'm Ann Cashel. I live in St. Anne. First of all, good evening and Happy New Year to all of you. Hopefully have a happy and healthy New Year. I'm here as a taxpayer, animal advocate, and concerned citizen. The New Year started off very badly for animals in St. Louis County. We had an issue on New Year's Day. First of all, I'm going to give some facts as I know it about St. Louis County, or at least in my research. The number of residents is right around 1 million. The actual national average of percentages of households with one pet is 68%. St. Louis County covers an area of 524 square miles. As far as the temperature goes with animals, He-manate Society of Missouri says, "Under 35, bring Rover inside." County Executive Stanger, thank you for your PSA, I saw it on one of the articles. It says, "Please remember that if it's too cold for you, it's too cold for your pets." The low on Monday, New Year's Day, was negative four, the high was 10. We were in unincorporated St. Louis County, out by Spanish Lake, and we saw a scrawny dog running around, scared, dirty, starving because it was eating out of a trash can. My sister went to try to feed it, she called me, I went up to try to help her. We called St. Louis County Animal Care and Control, and we were informed by the animal control officer on duty that there was one animal control officer on duty, one. While I realize it's a holiday, and I get that, for the statistics that I just said about St. Louis County and how large we are, it's not okay to have one ACO on at any certain time. He or she was handling three other emergencies and just couldn't respond to the emergency that we had of this dog, starving and experiencing death at minus four. I'm here to ask you to do something about this, to help the animals. It's great to have the PSAs and say these things, but if we're not going to have enforcement or do anything about it, what does it matter? People can do whatever they want to their animals, and they know they're not going to have any consequences for it. I don't know if it's a resource issue, it's not my job personally to figure it out, it's with, to all due respect, it's all of your jobs. I would ask if there's anything else that we can do, something like an animal abuse task force, like St. Louis City has. They have a full-time dedicated police officer that does investigations, they have a task force for animal cruelty. What I have found out after this is that there was somebody who responded later in the afternoon, hours later, and didn't see the dog in this household. We did see it run into the backyard, we know where the dog supposedly lives. They didn't see it, so they left. I asked again for an animal welfare check to be done, because if this animal was even taken inside or in the doghouse freezing to death, who would know? So again, thank you, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. We have a serious issue with animal issues in St. Louis County. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Michael Burton.
Hello.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, Michael Burton here. Thank you all once again for being here. By the way, thank you Chairman for explaining the proper decorum two weeks ago. Like I've said, I've never done anything like this before, and also thank you to the counselor who explained why no safety test has been performed yet regarding Tower T. I do have a clear understanding of the process. So you still might be wondering, why is this guy here again talking about Tower T? And where is he coming from? Obviously, this is something very important to me. When I was growing up, one of my favorite things to do was to walk down Higgy Road with my father to Tower T and whack those golf balls, tried to see who could get closer to the flag, and after we hit golf balls, we would walk down to Happy Joe's Pizza, order a Canadian bacon pizza, maybe play a video game or two, and walk back home and enjoy our pizza. And those were really great times in my life with my father, and really great times for my father as well, and thousands could share similar stories. Now, Tower T is set to close July 1st. My dad, for the past nine years, has lived in Omaha, Nebraska for work while he is still married to my mom, who is here this evening. My dad is about to retire and move back to Afton, so I wanted to let you all know a little bit more where I'm coming from. We've talked about for years how great it was going to be after he retired, that he was going to be able to come back and hit golf balls at Tower T. Right now, he hits them in his apartment. And unfortunately, Tower T, as I stated, is set to close July 1st. My father retires July 1st and comes home to Afton July 1st. Devastating news. So yes, this did start as a nostalgia thing for me, but after thinking about the facts and what the proposal is, I started to think, this really doesn't make much sense, what they're saying. And after speaking to community members and learning some other things, I started to learn there are safety issues, real safety issues with this proposal. And that is why I'm here once again. Those are the memories I have with my father, and those are the memories future generations should have with theirs and their mothers. Thank you all, thank you Chairman.
Thank you.
Two more speakers, Mr. Chair.
This concludes our public forum, we'll proceed with introduction.
Bill number one, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $3,000 from the United States Food and Drug Administration, appropriating the same for support of training for the FDA Retail Standards Grant Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Rona L. Elena's DBA Uni-Financial for Accounting Services in connection with the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the related annual external audit. Bill number three, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,933 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Annie E. Casey Foundation for Support of the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Program of the Family Court. Bill number four, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10,103 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 229-79, Kenneth A. Bellman et al., Robbins Mill Professional Center. Bill number five, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending ordinance number 9,315 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 94-79, Silver Leaves Investment Company. Bill number six, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans for the amended development in the C-8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, TC 35-17, Earl Bray in Brassfield. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 305 will be held.
Bill number 307, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 307 will be held.
Bill number 350, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill number 350 is held.
Bill number 355, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
This one, I move to perfect, bill number 355.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 355 is perfected.
Bill number 356, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect bill number 356.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 356 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 351, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number 351.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 351, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 351 is finally passed.
Bill number 352, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number 352.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 352, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 352 is finally passed.
Bill number 353, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number 353, and 353 will be held.
Bill number 354, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage, bill number 354.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 354, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 354 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have five of you this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Resolutions one and two will be held.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move that we pass resolution number three.
Motion to adopt resolution number three, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, which one that is? Kind of confused.
Why don't you, do you want to read the result, or?
Yeah, well, Councilwoman Gray asked me to read the first.
Okay, thanks.
Whereas Catherine Vera Moore, daughter of Lou Ethel Coleman and Jeff Williams, came into the world on May 30, 1925, in Marx, Mississippi, and left it on December 11, 2017.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Resolutions number four through 12, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I think we'll hold these until next week of the parchment, I remember. Or does it matter?
You can pass them.
Oh, okay. These are, um, Gray Day for Change is having Trailblazer Awards banquet, and they wanted to have these resolutions prepared for the people being recognized that day. So I'll go ahead and move to pass resolution number four as well.
Four through 12?
I mean, four through 12. I don't have them both.
I don't know who they all are, but I know that I have, one constituent I know, maybe two, so I'd like to be included on here, if you don't mind.
Well, we could just hold it. I don't know.
Did you just want to co-sponsor all of them, then?
Oh, yeah.
So there's motion to adopt resolutions four through 12 with Councilwoman Erby as a co-sponsor. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
So the parchment will reflect the co-sponsor. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number four through 12, there are seven ayes.
Resolutions four through 12 are adopted.
Resolution, sorry.
Go ahead.
Resolution number 13, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
Please read the resolution.
I'd be happy to do that. Resolution, whereas Ann Harkwell began her employment with St. Louis County on February 23, 2015, as legislative assistant to Third District Councilwoman Colleen Wassinger, and whereas Ann quickly learned the ropes in her new position and provided both Councilwoman Wassinger and Third District constituents professional, thorough, and efficient service, and whereas Ann's positive energy, warmth, and outgoing demeanor quickly endeared her to all her colleagues in the council department, and whereas Ann was also known for her successful efforts to form excellent working relationships throughout St. Louis County government, and whereas Ann's last day of employment with St. Louis County is January 5, 2018, and although her coworkers wish her well upon her return to her previous employment, they will miss her smile, humor, quick wit, and most of all, her entertaining and loving stories about her son and daughter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section 1, the county council thanks Ann Harkwell for her service to St. Louis County as she demonstrated to all how to be a true public servant. Section 2, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Ms. Harkwell as a token of their esteem and gratitude for her service to the people of St. Louis County.
Before I move to adopt the resolution, I just want to, for those of you that don't know, Ann is leaving to return to her former job in the private sector. I have very much appreciated her counsel and service in helping to represent the districts, the citizens of District 3, so you will be very missed. I wish you nothing but happiness and success, and I move to adopt resolution number 14.
Second.
Or 13, excuse me.
Second. Motion to adopt resolution 13 has been made, seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
I'd just like to say best wishes, Ann, we've enjoyed you being here, you've always had a smile and pleasant and just a joy to work with. I know we don't, won't miss you because you'll be here every week for the meeting, right? So with that, I, aye.
Councilmember Page?
We'll certainly hold a place for you in public comments, if you like, but we will miss you, thank you for your professional approach to county government. Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye, I haven't known you for very long, but I've enjoyed my, the time that you've been here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Well, Ann, congratulations, thanks for all your service, and it's been a privilege to work with you. So I know I relied on you more than once, so I'm going to miss you. I wish you every success going forward. Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I too will miss Ann, especially your snacks. And her little bund cakes. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your help on a lot of different issues here in the county and you will be missed. Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to announce that on resolution number 13, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 13 has been adopted.
Maybe she changed her mind.
Unfinished.
She's getting teary-eyed.
She got her to cry.
Send some tissue. I brought one.
Moving on.
That is for me.
Yeah. Resolution number 14, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas Pamela J. Wright obtained her bachelor's degree in public administration from the University of Miami in Oxford, Ohio, and MBA from the University of Colorado in Denver. And whereas actress sent as the manager of budget for the Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office, Pam relocated from Lakewood, Colorado to St. Louis. And whereas on May 11th, 1998, Pam began her career in St. Louis County government as budget director, bringing with her 14 years of experience in budgeting, planning, finance, computer information management, administration management, and human resources management. And whereas Pam not only quickly proved to be professional, detailed, and highly competent in her position, but also a warm, good-humored, even-keeled, wise and encouraging colleague. And whereas Pam's strong performance and extraordinary skillset led to her promotion to Director of Administration on April 1st, 2007. And whereas Pam shown in this position as well, more than rising to each and every challenge. And whereas January 5th, 2018, will be Pam's last day of employment with St. Louis County government. And whereas while Pam's colleagues wish her well in retirement, all agree she will be greatly missed for a long time to come. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section 1. The County Council thanks Pamela J. Wright for her service to St. Louis County as she conducted herself each and every day as a true public servant and wishes her the very